Road park would probably do that. I'm about to try and get you out there and look at anything we can do to do. I got my problem. This time I was out there. Go ahead, I will, I go on this.
Commissioner Ambrose, you have a question?
In the back of field five and six, in the back of fence line, how far is it to them to say five?
Backside.
Four feet, forty yards, thirty-five yards?
That, yeah.
See, I think we need to be careful before we do it on five and six. We've been putting that two lane truck over there, and also our entrance. The entrance we got's gonna be knocked out. We've got to open up the back entrance that time, or through that new property, when you get junior, we can cuss the roads. I'm sure when they put those two lanes, it's gonna take our entrance out. And I, they're gonna put them in there all.
I don't think it'll take our entrance out, but I don't think it'll.
I see how close our entrance is to the train. I mean, I, I agree with everything you've talked about, but I wish we could go ahead and we got that other new land, and you do have that other back entrance. Any great amount where we can use them, so something comes up and we still, because when we have bigger events, all those fireworks things, I wish we had another exit, because that place is a madhouse, and for some mercy, we have trouble getting in and out. That's what it was.
On that, this year, we had everybody out there within forty minutes.
Yeah, we had them out in forty minutes, but during fireworks thing, if you'd had an emergency, and they had to get in there, it was a nightmare. I mean, I wish we could open up that back entrance just for events like that.
We had, we coordinated that, they had a key to the back gate, emergency personnel.
I just, I wish we could get more DOT to talk to us about it, because they're, they're calling people by name, by name, I don't know.
They're not yet, but not by name.
What you got, did you, so let's make sure we're clear on that. There have been letters sent out, two letters sent out. Boy, had to do with an offer that wanted to, assumed where some of that was going to be, and sent out letters, uh, to people to contact me about it, just saying, hey, we'll help you get the most money we can from the DOT. That, that's one letter. The other one was a letter from DOT specifically to talk about surveying. Getting soil samples and finding lumber, setting tanks for it, things like that. So there is a letter from them about it, but it's still very preliminary. I've already talked, I've prepared it.
It won't be that long.
It could be like twenty, twenty-one, four, they'll break it down on it.
Longer than that.
But, but I think, but just as a side note, if they, if they, if that scope is as large as they talk about, it'll be very detrimental to the motion for soccer. And so I think that there's some, I think there's definitely some discussions we need to have with our delegation and with DOT, about starting that truck line north of the sign, for example. But anyway, that, it's a concern, it's about a concern, Commissioner Ambrose and the others, that it doesn't decide that, it's not set in stone either. There's one other, one other item that has, it's along the line, this is splash money, correct?
Yes, it's coming twenty-fourteen, dedicated to the rec.
That's correct. All right, but tell me if I go all, Commissioner Evans would know more than anybody on here, I think, that there was some discussion about horse, covered horse arena, out in that, out there. And I know that some, some of my constituents, for all of y'all's constituents as well, you know, have asked me about when that then happened. Um, because they were thinking that it was, was there a, was there a commitment to do that?
Some was, Commissioner James Bond, he, he more or less championed that campaign on it, and, you know, I'm thinking that it was unworkable.
Are these the funds that they were talking about using to do that?
Exactly.
So, I mean, just understand that, what, I mean, no one's here right now to even discuss that portion of it. And how, what's the scope? Were we talking about using the whole amount?
I have no clue what, what this scope would work.
The initial, yeah.
That's what it's about, causing.
I, I put it out to, um, and it came back, I think the total, uh, the fields themselves were unadded. The, uh, the soccer was another two, and so, and so the scope was around two fifty.
It's two hundred fifty thousand dollars somewhere.
It was twenty-two, fifteen, three.
We've got seven hundred thousand in there now?
Then he's got a hundred R and R, Mark's in, who's got six?
Six hundred. Well, and this, this vote is just authorized to obtain the bids. So that's the start of it, so while we also research this other, you know, discussion that we had, so, okay. So, we've got a motion to, to proceed to obtain the bid, I've got a second to do so. Any further discussion needed on?
Just confirming that your board was supportive of all this, and that y'all took a vote.
Yeah, we, we talked about several different, uh, things together, proposals, and so.
I, I call the question, all in favor? May I listen to more on that?
Thank you, Lance.
Jim?
And, uh, Lana, if you would, um, write these names down, on the field, we, we voted when we built the field, that we were named, clear the baseball field after one after Linda Arthur, one after Robert Williams, and one after Tommy Wilson. They were the pre-commissioners that caught the beat with a bunch of heat from that, on eighty-six, and I caught the rest of it in eighty-seven. And, uh, the football field was named in honor of William Pop Bay. And the sign, to down, I think.
Right, there's a sign for, uh, I know a sign for Henry Pop Bay's, uh, there's a sign for, uh, Wayne Dibbin.
Yeah, that's when you're coming in, that's right, but the fields.
Yeah, the only ones that have an actual sign on them right now, I believe, is, uh, Wayne Dibbin on one of the baseball fields up in the quad, and then Harry Pop Bay's down on the football field, what are the other names now?
Uh, uh, Robert Williams?
Robert Williams.
Linda Arthur.
Next.
Yeah, that was one baseball field.
All right, Robert Williams, what's his name?
Robert Williams?
Linda Arthur.
Linda Arthur.
Linda?
Uh-huh.
Arthur?
T R T H U R.
All right.
Tommy Wilson.
Tommy Wilson.
Oh, no, Tommy Wilson. Texas sound, two of this, like that.
Got it.
We did that, like, and they just, oh, they had. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, next item on the agenda is the MCC, the Rock County Convention Center upgrades. Jim?
Okay. Well, again, where does the money come from? This is a slide I, I showed you two or three months ago. Uh, there's a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars out of twenty-fourteen splash that is earmarked mandatory to be spent, uh, in relationship to the convention center. Uh, before I go into that, I just wanted to point out that, uh, they're doing quite well this year. Revenues are up forty-seven percent compared to last year. Uh, we're averaging almost thirteen thousand dollars a month in rent, compared to eighty-seven fifty this time last year. And through July, we've already achieved ninety percent of the budget revenue, so, uh, they're, they're doing pretty good this year. I came upon a, a report from the tourist product development resource team, uh, conducted back in about twenty sixteen. Don't know if you can read what I highlighted it read there, but it says, uh, and, and these were exterior improvements. Uh, use professional services to identify landscape issues around the facility. Uh, the second one was, take the grassy lawn near the lobby of the building, and they suggested putting a garden out there, but the, the photograph that they have looks like a gazebo to me. So, working with the staff at the convention center, uh, they pretty much agreed landscaping is pretty dire shake, uh, needs some irrigation for it, and before I was even hired and was given a tour by Commissioner Evans, I met Corinne, and she said, out in that grassy spot, Mr. Jim, is where I want to put my gazebo, and make it the most photographed spot in Monroe County. So I never forgot that. This is the front entrance, uh, this landscape was installed in two thousand and five, so it's fourteen years old. Uh, this is the very front, looks very bare, uh, some of these lockdown roses have really overgrown. This is by the handicap parking, and that's mostly weed, so it needs some work done. Uh, this is the design of the gazebo, uh, it's a twenty by twenty foot, uh, would be built on site. This is the grassy area referred to, and this is the actual canopy and the main entrance, uh, if you will, there's also the front entrance. This is the Google Earth, uh, this is the area, the grassy area where the gazebo would be installed with a sidewalk leading back to the canopy, and the area we're talking about for landscaping is just this area here and in the very front of the building. Uh, we've come back at some later day, perhaps with phase two over on this side. The, uh, preferred, uh, construction company for the gazebo is Yoder's out of Montezuma. Uh, they're probably one of the best in the areas. Uh, they put a bid in for right at sixteen thousand dollars. We received three bids for landscaping, uh, the most recent one was yesterday from C E L, Alaguliet, uh, eleven thousand and five dollars. Copy of that is in book, and that does, uh, include the irrigation system. Uh, there was two, uh, estimates received for the concrete work. One was from Grant Construction, uh, thirty-four fifty, and that was only for the concrete, no, uh, earthworks at all. Ricky Epps out of Forside bid forty-eight hundred for both the concrete and doing all of the, uh, civil work on site. So if you, uh, take the bid from Yoder's, the low bid from Forside, and the bid from Ricky Epps, you're looking at a project at thirty-one thousand eight hundred dollars. Again, these are twenty-fourteen restricted splash funding, meaning that these funds can only be spent at the Monroe County Convention Center. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Jim. All right, it's a pleasure with the board. I think the motion we're approving for discussion, can you have a motion? Got a second? Got a second, Commissioner Ambrose?
No discussion. On the, the C E L, they're putting in the irrigation system, but then we've still got a supply of power, we gotta cut through the asphalt to get out there and put the water and all that. And we're looking at parking out there. Could you go back to that overhead picture if you don't mind, sir? Uh, you see the grassy area we've got? Is there not a way, we, I talked to Kev, and we're gonna cut some of those trees down up on the far corner on the left, but isn't there a way we could take half of that lot and make it parking out of it? Because once we put that gazebo in there, we're gonna have to put some kind of fence all the way around to prevent these people's... We have a fence down, that whole area is parked with cars, and will they need that much for a wedding? That's what I'm getting at. We're, we're hurting the parking. You know, instead of centering that gazebo right in it, see how the canopy is on the building? Centering out from the canopy, which would be in the upper left quadrant of that thing, of that, that grassy lot? And then take, at least add us another forty-five, thirty-car parking lot up there.
You're talking cutting this in half?
Yes, sir. Or a fourth or something, see, like, if you put the gazebo right in the center, it's not gonna be centered with a door. But we don't have any parking, because if, if, if the tail is coming there at our door, where we got the handicap parking, if you can put a fence there on the bottom left of that building, fenced off the upper left, we got no parking.
I can't even see where it's gonna add more, about eight parking spaces.
Well, and you have a fence out there, and you have about forty cars out there, in that parking lot.
You got, you got eight at the bottom of it, and if you put eight on the other side and a drive, then that's, then you, I don't see where you got.
I'm just, I'm just trying to get as much, again, we don't have parking out there. Motel, you see the parking lot across the street, over on right? Kev made a deal with him, we can use those parking places right there, but hotels full of camp.
Very, very clear, he's across the hotel parking lot for our big one.
Yeah.
So they can't take out, or, or, you know, that.
I mean, they let us use it, but if the tail wants to fence off that stuff behind us on the left, right there, handicap parking place right there, we could use it. He owns it, we don't.
That's true.
And I mean, we need to look at parking, because we may have a bigger fence there, that place fills up big time.
You have one section, sir. You know, you're right.
Nine mile four, the gazebo out there, make it look better, build a bit of the grass out there. But we've got a little bit more expense in this than what C E L says.
Actually, each of them, they, there were more spence in each of them, if you looked at it. Uh, one of them was not gonna remove the old shrubbery and, and every one of them, there was certain things that weren't. Now, I think that, uh, Jim, I talked to you about it, about cutting the parking lot to pull the power across, and Junior can do that.
We're gonna do that. Is C E L gonna remove the old fence?
I think Junior's talked him into letting him take his new gravel truck out there and jank him out of the ground.
Fifteen minutes out.
I'm gonna give you, I tell you what, she does an excellent job.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, this would make the thing more desirable and more relevant, so.
Good.
Got just one, two seconds.
I got a concern about that gazebo, though, will it not attract people, hotels, or, you know, people have a pencil, that you have a private man with?
I see the fence up there in the back. We've been happy to put some kind of fence up there, because otherwise, people could be trying to park in there still.
What I'm saying is, I'm just thinking people would use it as a, just see it out there and say, well, I think I'll walk around for a while. We've got people having parties, that night in the hill. Oh.
Good question. Jim, let's see your quarters. Which one's the? Green dotted, yes. All right, it's too much fun here. Oh, just a side note, this is all last minute, just brainstorming as opposed to, but could you do something in this area where you put the gazebo?
We don't own that.
We don't own this?
Nope.
I thought we didn't own this.
Nope, go over the handicap place, and see the white, all the white stripes in the middle handicap, right about there. To the right, they're right.
You don't, I don't know.
I don't have the world, they saw us that setup like they saw us.
I'm looking, I have to.
Well, I mean, so, I know I was getting us off the topic, but we're kind of off target a little bit, but, because I agree with you about parking. There's a huge, there's a huge need of parking out there across the board, you know, and I would rather, we got a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars left, is that right, total? It'd be really nice to, to, you know, reconfigure whatever parking, to maximize the usage for that, because definitely is an issue, entrance, ingress, address, all of that, uh.
Well, we do, we keep them, we don't own the parking, we do.
Right, that, so, George, so back here is not owned by us, back up.
That's correct, we don't own that.
But if you pull the records apart, I'll, I'll, right there. Now, by what this, this is just by what few publics put in there.
Yeah, it, it could, it is that.
Okay.
It's a definite, all of that.
So, so, so if we want to put a gazebo in, it has to really be up here, Jim?
Can't make that decision either.
Okay, Jim, here. All right, uh, we have a motion, we have a motion to approve, we've got a second, and we moved into discussion. Uh, any more discussion?
I wish we put it on. We talked about what they, trying to come up with a gazebo.
Well, he's right about fence, to keep people off of the, you know, anyway, we might need to put a fence at a lockable, uh, except, except, you know, say, a lock, like, move, move something like that.
Well, it's, it's gonna happen.
So, yeah, we could do that, yes.
I mean, what I, I look at.
Tim, have you got a, until you get the gazebo? Oh, I don't see a gazebo.
So, I'm gonna go ahead and tell you this, too, that the parking issue, I mean, I, I thought, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm parking on the back, but I'll tell you right now, based on the number of people you can fit in that building, we do not have anywhere near the current code for the, for a parking ratio for that, for that building. So, like, if that guy ever stopped letting us park right there, we'd be, we'd be screwed, because every event we've ever had, we've parked right there.
I was just asking, Ben, I thought, sure, we had these that would allow us to park in the back, and these got to be cleared, you see much of them, too, but we don't have. I thought this three year, I don't want Jim handling, bought that like they did without getting a butterdew.
Probably didn't buy it. I, I was writing on from the fair, but can, the fair negotiation.
Well, they should have given us more, a lot. All right, so, so real fast, let's, let's do it this way, we got a motion right now, and a second, to approve putting the gazebo, uh, in that period. So, what I'd like to do is call the question, and if it passes, we go forward, if it fails, then we can, then we can direct Jim to give Corinne to come back and call more with us. Understand where we're going?
I approve if you, if you add up to another ten thousand for like a, a two-foot fence around three quarters of it. We gotta keep those cars up there, let it tear up there from here.
Or you could do some landscaping, and some bushes all the way around, make it, make it kind, well, I mean, I'm talking about make it kind of like a garden. You're gonna have weddings in there.
Just so that people, mother can't drive in there.
That's right.
So how would you increase the scope?
We can approve this, and then come back and approve a fence or landscaping, or whatever else after, right? We have a motion to approve this, I'm gonna call the question on, on what has been presented. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Which is for this, for the gazebo and everything on here.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm all, I'm all.
Okay, well, that's fine.
I'd rather table it, we just.
Yeah, let's go, let's keep that.
I'm just not sold on the gazebo, if we find out next week the guy doesn't want us to park, and now we gotta tear it all down and make more parking.
So you're ready, all you've gotta do is vote against.
All right.
You ready, so all in favor? Uh, Eddie's in favor, we got one, all opposed? All opposed, all right, so we got four against and five. You're gonna make it, so it's three to two against, for now, we're gonna, we're gonna.
We voted against.
All right, uh, Larry, George, and myself. All right.
We're gonna leave this as.
We wanna, it's not, we're not against the idea, we're just against some of the.
What instructions do we should give?
Okay, so, what we wanna do is, if, if we wanna put it in that location, then we gotta add some kind of fencing, things like that. The rest of the story is what George is, and all of us have a concern about parking in this location. I mean, that, we could be cut off in the back of it.
What I would do, if, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
What I would do is, I would, I would just, do we have an architect or somebody that, that our building, let's, our building inspector? Ask him, or Kelsey, Kelsey does parking. You, you manage parking for new commercial developments, right? An office building has to have a what, a what, what a thousand, a, not, a, a two spots per thousand square foot, right, or something like that?
I don't do it as much as.
We, what we need to do is find out, what is the current code for a building of that, an assembly of that size? If we have people coming, and, and do we, are we, how, how short are we? I guarantee you, we're short. How short are we on the parking ratio based on the size of that building? Retail is, is, I wanna say, five spots per thousand square feet, you give that five parking spots per thousand square feet in retail. Assembly should be a little bit less than that, but it, I mean, it, it'll probably be more than office, which I think is either one or two. It'll probably be two, two, two to three spots per thousand square feet, how big is the building? I'm just saying, he'll be able, they'll be able to calculate, tell us.
I don't think anybody doubts it, sure, but what are you gonna do about it? I mean.
Well, you could use that. Just, just plan on if, if we ever get, you know, I mean, I, I would say definitely some landscaping, but I don't know that I wanna go build a fifteen thousand dollar gazebo and, and then find out, we, we need to tear it down next year.
That's, that's kind of where I'm at, especially if they come back and take away the parking on the backside, I mean, we're gonna have to do something in the front end.
So how many, how many parking spaces do we anticipate?
That building, that building.
I'd say forty, so if we can get forty in there, then I agree with you, otherwise. We'll get forty.
Or, or do a jump stock, see, there's.
Party motor, that's big.
Yeah, thank you, let's, let's do that for now, because I tell you what, we've got some folks in here that have waited the whole, for our planning and zoning. So, at this time, uh, we need to have a hearing, correct? So, uh, we're gonna pay a motion to move into a public hearing, planning and zoning. Got a motion from, I've got one from Ambrose first, got a second from Commissioner Evans, all in favor? All right, we're now in the planning and zoning hearing, Mr. Kelsey Porter, if you could come up and talk to us about the Gasset application?
Mr. and Mrs. Gasset are requesting a conditional use in agricultural to hold weddings on their property. The building and planning and zoning, they let them know the approximately fifty by eighty to hold the weddings. Um, they would most likely utilize the bathrooms in their house for now, we will cut down some trees for parking, and, um, a question came up from one of the P and Z board members about alcohol, that will be left up to the K O's, which, that's normal, so. But the planning and zoning board approved this application file to Z E L.
Okay, uh, the Gasset's are here?
Yes.
All right, uh, so, real quickly, we'll save you a little bit of time, is everybody here to speak against? Do you have a map, uh, put up where it's been relocated? Off Z E L, is that right? Got it? Recommendation, I said the recommendation, but the planning and zoning board approved this, and there was no opposition at the planning and zoning board, as well as there does not in here at Z E L. Y'all would like, uh, when they're asking for.
Two different?
No, no, just, not the picture, just, yes, pose, pose a photo of the picture. Would y'all have questions for the Gasset's, or y'all alone? If not, we can move out of the public hearing. Got a motion to move out of the public hearing, we got a second, Commissioner Rollin', all in favor? All right, we're back in the public meeting, and this time I'll eliminate a motion to approve. Got a motion to approve, Commissioner Evans, we got a second, Commissioner Rollin', any discussion? Here and then, I'll call the question, all in favor? All right, there you go.
All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate you. All right, the next item on the agenda, comments, uh, commissioners. I've got one. Um, I thought about it, um, when Lana was up here to speak. Back when I first came on, um, we actually started the process of having a department head, each meeting come to speak, and at the time, we had four A extension come. Um, and then somewhere in the process, we stopped having the department head come, we probably moved into budget, or we, whatever the issue was, or the series of issues, we stopped doing it. But I mentioned it to Commissioner Rollin', and I'd just like to comment, for maybe a work session, or, I mean, uh, as an idea, not as a work session, but either at the work sessions, or at the, at the meeting, at a time where the, each department head comes, just give us a quick update of their department. You know, for all of us to come, and they can get, you know, bring in employees, if they wanna recognize them, or employees, if they want to talk about ideas that they have, and like that, uh, you know, just give us an update. Do that once a, we can even go so far as to go into the budget portion of it, and talk about it through the year, you know, and how they're doing, you know, on budget, you know, things they may need, looking forward, all those kind of things. I just, I want, my comment was, that as that is an idea from the department head to come, you know, and, and Commissioner Rollin', he came to me, and he's, he didn't realize that, you know, that I, so I obviously liked his idea. So, anyway, uh, anyway, so that's my comment, um, any other commissioner comments?
Yeah, why don't, why don't we, uh, arrange to come to the department head meeting, all of us at once for?
We could also do that, I mean, but, yeah, yeah.
All of them, one time.
We can come at different times, we, whatever.
You could, Jim could let us know when he's meeting, and we could come in, if any of us had an interest in it.
We ain't got them in the department, that's why can't we have them all at one time?
Well, that's.
It's the first I've heard of.
No, it's, it is, it's a very, it's, it's, it's a comment, again, this is brand new to him, and this is also. No, it's, it is, it's a very, it's, it's, it's a comment, again, this is bringing it to him, and this is also them coming in and just kind of, it's more of a, you know.
Clarify for him, you want all department heads to come to a meeting?
One, no, no.
To give a report?
One, one at a time, just to come in and talk about, you know, kinda like Chief Perry did tonight, he recognized his employees in award ceremony, talk, hey, one of, and those types of things. It's more of a public relation, gets all of us, you know, the paper gets a chance to report on some of the good things that are going on. It's not a, it's not a situation we're gonna drill them on.
It's not an interrogation, it's, it's a, it's an opportunity for them to showcase their department for about five minutes to the commissioner, that's. I think, I, I, if, you, you know, if, if I were a department head, I think I'd like that opportunity.
Is that okay?
But I'll, I'll do what you tell me to do, personally, I don't like it, but, uh, it's your call.
So I should've brought that up with you beforehand, you know?
I, I have some, some department heads, I wonder, is, is it going to increase their stress level to come up here? And what are they gonna talk about? For example, what will we talk about on the recycling center? What will we talk about on the landfill? What will we talk about on the shop? And I could probably name a few others. I think it's interesting to have, uh, Junior and, uh, Matt, and some of the others, what's going on in recreation.
Okay, we, we can, this is just a comment, throw it out, this is for women discussing in a work session, and you and I can talk about it later. So, so we have to decide tonight, just, that was just a thought or an idea. All right, anybody else, any other commissioners have a comment? Here are none, anybody else have a comment?
Wow.
Hey, go ahead, I got this.
We've already done it, but I think we put the cart before the horse in that last zoning, we just did. I don't think we should approve that until we got some questions asked from them. They're gonna use their bathroom as a personal house for that wedding thing, and then both of them are supposed to fill out, the property are supposed to fill out an oath of office. Only one of them did yet, was taking out from both of them. We've got to be a little bit more careful in how we.
Well, they've still gotta, they've still gotta adhere, adhere to, uh, public safety and, 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 uh.
Let's let Kelsey address that, sorry, George, I know, I just.
Sorry, I just wanted to say.
Health department guidelines are gonna, they're gonna.
I just wanted to say with the application, I tried very hard to get them to fill that application out thoroughly. I actually even asked them, are they sure they wanna go through with this? Normally, in my experience, wedding venues are not highly liked, um, normally, and I don't mean to, like, you know, but normally, all of my people that come up there, they thought application would feel.